All right. You ready, Sam?
Yep.
All right. Uh, I will call the November eighth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission Agenda, uh, meeting to order. Um, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I do, I move.
Mr. Dana with the motion.
Second.
Ms. Blackmore with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, they are approved. Uh, I will likewise entertain a motion to enter, uh, to approve the minutes from the May tenth meeting, which are in the packet. There are some links, um, just for reference, there are some links, hyperlinks. Uh, so if you have a paper copy, um, that's what those are for. So I will entertain a motion, or if there's any additions, changes, or corrections. So moved.
I second.
Dr. Prithrich with the motion. Mr. Dana with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, they are approved. Uh, at this time, we will entertain public comments not related to any items on the agenda. So if anybody in the gallery would like to speak, you are so recognized if you come to the podium. And seeing none, we will move on to reports from commissions, boards, staff, and committee. I will start with Mr. Dana.
Well, the CIC has not met recently that I'm aware of, but they're going to be re-meeting very soon. I assume that they are doing the kind of research on economic possibilities that we value. Uh, but I cannot be more specific because I don't think I'm allowed to be. Thank you.
Perfect. Dr. Prithrich.
I don't know what to report on exactly, other than, uh, you know, from council. Managed lawn. Airman, ordinance has been something that council's been talking about working through with staff. And some upcoming changes in the city in terms of, um, I think there's going to be a new staffer, potentially sustainability coordinator that might intersect with the work that plan does, particularly as it relates to climate sustainability. Uh, so, uh, I'll stop at that.
Uh, I know we're in reports from commissions, boards, and committees, but I'd be remiss if I didn't point out for the record that this is, well, this is a planning commission meeting. This is also a joint meeting with the Oxford Parking Transportation Advisory Board.
Yes, of which members are Carla, myself, and John. So we don't have a quorum of our group anyway, but so.
But there's, yeah, but there's no action items, uh, technically for either board, so everything's copacetic. Mr. Bracken.
Sure. Um, for the Environmental Commission, which also relates to what's on council now, um, our managed natural lawn care area will be likely to be sent back to the Environmental Commission, where we'll reconsider and talk with staff, and then maybe refine it and bring it back to council. And then on the other news, um, we finally purchased a solar flare for, uh, our closed-off dump that puts out methane. And when that gets finally implemented, should greatly reduce our carbon dioxide methane emissions.
Ms. Blackmore?
That's awesome, and I just serve on the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, so welcome, John. Good to be here today.
From Historic, uh, Architecture and Preservation Commission, um, we have a meeting tomorrow. We are, uh, you, you've heard me talk about Ten Beach Street, which originally had an outdoor patio proposed with a retractable roof. Um, uh, the, um, architecture firm had some staffing changes due to, um, the primary gentleman passing away. And there's a new proposal for a more permanent structure, um, which will be reviewed tomorrow. Uh, slightly uncharted territory being where it is in the alleyway easement, so I imagine a fairly robust conversation. Uh, other than that, we just had some administrative approvals for signage. And that is about, actually, let me think. So our last meeting was, uh, for the May ten. Uh, I will say on behalf of, uh, HAPC as well, we did conduct, um, the walking tours. Um, I know that that's been reported out in a, in a few different areas, but, um, we had Hilltop. I am completely blanking on, uh, one of them, Miami, we did a quad. And, um, up Bottom Road, they, they did an area up that way. Uh, so they were well attended. The one I facilitated on Hilltop, uh, pretty sure had about thirty-five to forty folks. And we were, we were, uh, not expecting it, but we were pleasantly blessed with folks who had grown up in the neighborhood and people, uh, who came out, um, to share stories that there's no way we would have ever known, um, from the Smith Regional, um, collection or, or just, uh, living here. So that was quite nice. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Perry, Mr. Chair. Uh, so Sam Perry City Staff, welcome everybody in the audience. Uh, a couple of comments. Uh, one, today is World Town Planning Day, declared in the city of Oxford and internationally. So I want to thank Cory for, uh, coming to the city council meeting and accepting the proclamation and making a few comments. Uh, and I, I appreciated your comments because it gave a little bit of, uh, more detail on what planning commission does and tried to bring all the input together for, uh, from public comments and also kind of listening to all sides and balancing those, um, kind of trade-offs. And I think that's, uh, often not seen, maybe even at the city council level. So I appreciate you giving it just a little bit of a dialogue there. Then my other announcement I wanted to make, which I learned, uh, at OKI ICC this morning, which is Ohio Kentucky, Indiana, um, Intermodal Coordinating Committee, which BCR TA staff attended with me as well. Um, the, uh, the news that I wanted to share is that OKI is, for the first time ever, has drafted a complete streets policy, which we haven't had. Uh, Miami Valley has had one for many years, and so the executive board will, uh, later this week, hopefully vote on that and accept it. The staff actually drafted it. It's very similar to the city of Oxford one, so we're glad to see that. Although we have had one, uh, for a couple of years now, it's good to see that our regional planning organization would support us in that and kind of hold everyone else to the same standard. And it becomes more of a mainstream concept, so, um, that was my announcement from, that I learned today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so just want to let everybody know that we've got a big event coming up next week on Wednesday, November sixteenth, at six P M. We're having our Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan Open House. Um, it's been about a year and a half process thus far developing a draft plan, uh, that we hope to see adopted by council, hopefully in January. Um, it's a hundred and forty-eight pages, the draft document is, so we're hoping to kind of break that down for folks at our open house, unveil some of the key concepts behind that. Um, that'll be at the Talawanda Middle School at forty-thirty Oxford, Oxford Riley Road. Uh, again, that's at six P M. Uh, come hungry, there will be snacks. Um, we, we hope to see everybody there.
Thank you, sir.
And that will come to the planning commission in December? Is that likely going to be the agenda?
That will likely be the agenda. Um, we'll give the community a chance to absorb the plan. Um, and by the way, if you cannot make the date, uh, November sixteenth, there will be ways to view the plan and the recommendations online and provide feedback. Uh, but assuming if, if all goes well with the community and we receive, um, pretty good positive feedback on what's been drafted, then that'll be the game plan, is to take it to Planning Commission in December.
Perfect. All right. Uh, Vice Chair Rosenberg shared that she didn't have much to report, so, uh, we will move on to the next agenda item. All right. Uh, so Agenda Item Six, Butler County Regional Transit Authority, uh, presentation. Uh, Mr. Perry, would you, uh, lay the foundation for us, sir?
Sure, yeah. Uh, I'll, in a moment, I'll introduce, uh, Matt and Louise from, uh, BCR TA. This is a great opportunity. We don't often have this opportunity. It's, it's, it's kind of fortuitous that would have happened on World Town Planning Day. Sorry, I have to say that again. But, um, yeah, this is, uh, I won't take all of their thunder, but I'll say that, um, planning of any kind, uh, long-term is not often well-understood by a community. And so it's good for us, uh, to think short and long-term, and it, and especially something that is somewhat new in the region. Transit is really important to us, and Oxford citizens have been, um, asking for it in various ways. And so to, to some extent, we haven't developed that very well. Uh, so I applaud BCR TA for, um, getting this process underway many, many months ago, and now we're at a point where, uh, they're moving forward with kind of into the final stages. And so I'll turn it over to Matt and Louise, and you guys take it from here. Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm going to walk you guys through this presentation. It's about our transit plan. We've been using Kibbutz Horn and Four Square to do a study over the last year. We started last January, and what we're trying to find out is to get input from the public and from different stakeholders to see what it is we can improve upon, what needs to be changed, what amenities need to be added, what kind of direction we need to go in with vehicles, uh, what improvements can be made on a, on a variety of levels. So first, we're going to start off with the introductions. You already know Matt, Sean, our Communications and Outreach Manager, and myself, Luis Rodriguez. Here's an overview of the plan. So this is the first time we're do, we're doing this. Uh, it's been over ten years since we've really seriously looked at our system and done any sort of comprehensive overview such as this. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be focusing on improving existing routes or adding new routes, uh, different sources of funding, fleet technology enhancements, the fleet itself, identifying different enhancements to amenities, additional amenities, and see, uh, finding support for the existing, uh, facility that we have and the future facility that we will have at Chestnut Fields. So right now, we're here in the second phase of public outreach. Uh, like I said before, we're doing surveys, both in-person and online. And so with our existing service, I'm sure many of you are familiar with here in the city of Oxford and Miami University, but we also have our regional routes and we have our Middletown routes. Here we have our on-demand service, our BOE and our paratransit service, BE Care. Here's the zone. And so here, we're writing an update. We're trying to see what our market says, do an analysis on that, collect that data. And the interesting thing about this is that the city of Middletown has also conducted their own study, and OKI is in the process of conducting a study as well. So we're going to have a lot of different data points coming in, and we're going to have a very complete picture of what it is that we're going to do. So strengths of our current system is that it's a fare-free system. It's generally reliable and on-time, and the operators are very knowledgeable and they're friendly. Many of them have been here for many years, and they understand the system inside and out, and they can direct people in the right direction. Areas of improvement, expanding the service to residents, neighbors, and different neighborhoods that we're out-serving, and different areas that we're out-serving, and connecting with the region. Uh, improving the routes in general, uh, especially here in Oxford, we're thinking bi-directional routes has been a recommendation, but everything is subject to change, is, is an ongoing study. Uh, increasing capacity on certain routes at certain times of day, so peak hours, having maybe more vehicles out during peak hours. And finding more drivers, which has been an industry-wide challenge for everybody, but we're doing fairly well so far, and we hope to hire as many as we possibly can. So areas of improvement of our facilities, we would like to provide real-time transit information. Right now, we have a few, uh, one that we have at the Kroger here at Ox, in Oxford, and then we have another one at the Armstrong Student Center that shows route information for riders. We also want more shelters and benches, um, particularly at high-traffic areas, major intersections, our most-used stops. And areas of improvement for customer information and experience, we want more access, we want something to be, everything to be more accessible and easy to understand, for everything to communicate better, more robust advertising for driver positions, routes, services that we offer, and just education in general. So the results of the public survey, uh, the two main categories that people have responded to is that there's not enough frequency and the bus does not go where they want it to go. This is not uncommon for a lot of systems, but n- now we're trying to narrow down what it is that, where it is that we need to go and how we can improve frequency. And so, so here are some ideas that we have that have been presented to us by our consultant. Uh, right now, the forty-two X is operated by Cincinnati Metro on our behalf, and we're thinking of expanding that. We recently acquired some motor coaches from MCI, and we're going to be going, uh, well, I, in this proposal, we're going from Middletown down into Sin, pardon me. We're going from Middletown down into Cincinnati, and we're going to have two alignments to that route. One's going to serve the northern end near UC and the hospital and the EPA, which is, uh, did it likely be a good thing because with the changing nature of work, with how, with how COVID-19 has affected in-person work, there are certain jobs that still have to be done in person and certain obligations that need to be done in person, and we think that this may be a good idea. Here are some ideas for the Oxford routes, which I think interests you the most. Some ideas for the Hamilton routes. And as you can see, there are two scenarios, so we've been presented with two scenarios for each set of routes, and the Middletown routes, as well as our regional routes. So next steps, as I mentioned earlier, we're doing public feedback. Comment period is from October twenty-fourth through November twenty-fourth. You can fill out our survey at BCRTATransitPlan.com. And I want to let you guys know that it has an interactive map, and there's a dropdown menu on the top left of that map, and that menu will show you both scenarios, and you can drop pins on the map and comment on specific routes or parts of routes. So you can get very detailed responses, but we also have the pre-sorted, uh, survey as well that you can answer, that'll guide you through it. And, uh, thank you very much. I open up the floor to any comments, questions? Yes?
In the packet you were handed out, it speaks of changing demographics. And that's one issue that I would ask you to expound on in greater detail, in some detail. The other is, is the monetary aspect, the, the funding, and, and some insights as to how that actually is happening, how, what, what fundings, what funding strategies are you going to employ and are you employed? So are those two questions I, I would like to have you address? Is that fair?
Take the demographics out, so I can have a little fun.
Well, this is a fast-growing area. This, not, not just Butler County itself, not just the city of Oxford, but this region, the tri-state area is growing very fast, and there are a lot of changing demographics. More people are moving here. It's, um, it's a very vibrant place that is almost being reinvigorated, like much of the Rust Belt is, and the changing demographics is going to involve us. In the last ten years, a lot has changed in terms of where people want to go, where different services are, where different businesses are, and right now, since we haven't done this in so long, it's important that we understand that so that we can better serve that need, those needs.
Okay. I think I'd add to that, a lot of the, the, uh, demographic in a lot of scenarios, I think is code for commuters. Um, you know, we've seen, uh, you know, most of our ridership is back better than it was before pandemic, but we've seen a pretty precipitous and stable drop in commuters. So that route into Cincinnati is still about down about eighty, ninety percent from pre-pandemic. Um, you saw that the R-two, which was a route that traveled between Middletown and Oxford, has also been cut since pandemic because it just, um, there was very, very little ridership, and we were in a real bind for operators, so that's part of what we're looking at. Um, to speak about the funding piece, I get, we get asked this question all the time. There's been no determination on funding yet because we're in the phase right now, we're finding out what level of service is appropriate, what kinds of services do we need to provide, how much of it do we need to provide? Um, so we're taking a combination of this public feedback. We will combine that with regional travel demand patterns and data that's collected at the OKI level. We'll also combine that, um, with new data we can find and other survey input to kind of decide what level of service we need, and then we'll be able to kind of put together a plan and decide how much that's going to cost. And that's kind of the point where we can decide, okay, how do we fund this? So today, you know, we don't really know how much service we're going to have. Um, we may have enough money in our current budget to fund what we need to do. We may just move all the pieces around, and it might work out. Um, it may be that we want to add a bunch of service, and we need to come up with a plan to figure out how to fund that. And there are a couple of different ways to do that. Um, just to be completely transparent, there is a question about sales tax in the survey because that's how most transit systems in the state of Ohio are funded. Um, presently, BCR TA does not have any dedicated local funding source. We do not receive any money from the county or any, um, ballot initiatives or property taxes. We are completely funded by grants through the Federal Transit Administration, um, and revenue contracts or partnerships like we have with City of Middletown and Miami University. So we will probably, this report will come back to the BCR TA Board of Trustees for an adoption, probably early, um, first quarter next year, and they'll make a decision at that point about how much of the plan they want to implement, um, whether we're just going to pick off a few things, or we want to do the whole thing, and then they'll have to have a discussion as well about how to fund that. And the consultant will provide some ideas and suggestions, um, but a lot of that's technical, so, um, we're not asking a lot about that right now until we figure out what level of service we're going to be asked to provide.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, if you could go back to the Oxford Route Map, please? Um, so I have, first of all, terrible eyesight. Um, I do. I would love this map at some point, like in a PDF format.
It is on, if you go to BCRTATransitPlan.com, it is available. There's a gray box with all the interactive methods. You can take the survey, you can play with the interactive map, or you can download the PDF with all of these in it.
I will, I will try to remember that link. Okay, so, um, can you kind of visually, can you describe what visually we're seeing here? Um, like what routes do we have now that you are going to be adding to in, in, the plan is to add to in the future?
This kind of throws a lot of things, current alignments, out the window. So these are the scenarios that you're looking at.
Okay.
What our consultant is trying to do is determine what the best of both worlds is here. I don't think they're actually proposing that we would operate each one of these independently. They're looking for, they were trying to elicit the most feedback from the public about what do you love, what do you hate? Um, one of the priorities is to eliminate loopy routes. Um, people don't like loops because it's great going one way, but it's not so great going the other way. Um, we also focused heavily on the new facility at Chestnut Fields. You can see all of the routes are pulsing in and out of that station. The, one of the big differences between the two scenarios, if you look at the green or kind of aqua line, I guess, um, going out to Walmart, is that, um, on the left side or Scenario One, it is just an in-town route. If you look at it in Scenario Two, it's actually a piece of a much longer route that goes into Hamilton, similar to the, the way the R-three operates today, if you're familiar with that, but then also continues into Hamilton County. Um, so if you, hmm, if you want to page over to the Regional One, you might be able to see it. Yeah, there you go. Um, so you can see it all the way up from Walmart, all the way down to Hamilton County.
Great. So what I want to ask about, go back, please go back to the, the local, yeah. Okay. So my question is, what kind of stops do you have going, um, both twenty-seven North and twenty-seven South that you would consider city route?
You mean as far as where would be located stops, or?
Well, my, what I would like to know is how this is going to help the, the people in different residential communities across the town? Because right now, I hear a lot of talk that there's not stops that make it efficient for people to get to work, like across town. And so I guess I'm just, does this, does this have, so I, like I said, I have very poor eyesight. Is there stop information or proposed stop information here?
So this is very general right now because once we kind of pick some alignments or we get some feedback, we can then go in and place stops, so that's kind of a next step. Um, but it would be really helpful, that's one of the reasons we're a, out asking for feedback. Um, on that interactive map, you can actually drop a pin right where you want a bus stop. Um, so that's something that would be really helpful to us that we can incorporate into the feedback. The other thing is, if somebody drops a pin and says they want a bus stop here, um, it's, it's like Facebook or Twitter or whatever, you can keep commenting on the same comment, and you can, um, support it or back it up. So, um, that's a really good way to get that information in. I think there is, um, that's a, a fair point. Um, you know, the system was designed to, um, provide service for students because the university, um, funds the system in whole right now.
Great.
Um, so that i- is a fair criticism, and there was a reason behind it. Um, you know, as we look to try and expand and do other things, and we may look to other avenues for funding, I think we have the opportunities to, considering other things. Um, we also, you know, we don't ask a lot of questions in the survey about span or frequency, but that's stuff the consultant is looking at, and I think we're also looking for that feedback people have, times of day or something they're interested in, and we'd love to hear about that.
I have a question for you, one more, sorry, girl. The last thing, because it still relates to the input about these routes, okay? So I love it, and you know, social pinpoint, other stuff like that. I'm happy to go in and like think about that, but a lot of the people that really need to give you the input are not going to be doing that. They might be seniors that are really uncomfortable with technology, or they may just not have that technology. How are you going to find out, like, from the community here in Oxford?
Sure.
Like?
We, um, there's paper surveys on the bus, so we do have paper. Uh, we're happy to send those to anybody. Um, Sean Cowan, our Communications Outreach Manager's not here tonight because she's presenting to Fairfield Township tonight. Um, but she's happy to come do presentation, and she does travel training. Um, you know, we are a relatively small agency. There's about, I don't know, ten people in our entire administrative staff, so that's one of the reasons we're here tonight is because we would like to rely on your connections. Um, if you know of places we can get in front of people or bring paper surveys or, um, uh, talk about this or bring that information, we would love to do that. So, um, I'm happy, I know Cory has my email, and, and David has it as well, and Sam, and you can connect us with anybody. Um, you know, uh, if you, if you have a place or a venue or a group or even individuals, we are happy to do that. Um, but to be very honest, we are relying on a lot of community help to make some of those connections.
Ms. Blackmore?
Maybe just following up on that question about communication. So, you know, we have independently talked i- in our Climate Action Task Force for Miami University, a lot about the employee side of things. Has there been specific outreach to Miami University employees, and how is that going? Is there a, is there a direct connection there in terms of talking about what they, what would help them, um, move away from needing to take a car to campus?
Yeah. So there has not been targeted outreach. Um, we've been very broad in our outreach because we are looking for a very broad response. Um, we did, um, uh, we did connect with Student Senate, so we were on the student's side. Um, you know, we've been pushing a lot of, of social media, and we have been trying to get it in the right places. We put up some posters in some work locations, but again, if there are groups or people that, um, we can connect with, that you could help us, we really welcome that opportunity, um, so that we can get in front of some of those people, or get that message out. Um, we have, you know, we've done the email thing, we're boosting posts and things. Um, again, it is primarily digital because that's the most affordable way to get in front of the most people, but we do realize that there are folks that we are probably missing. Um, and that's why we got this roadshow, um, trying to make some of those connections and close some of those gaps.
Okay.
Not, not recently, but I know, uh, when I was at Miami, twenty-twenty prior, um, we would get a lot of, uh, emails, information, opportunities. And I just happen to remember one where I attended, uh, BCR TA at Armstrong, and I talked to the gentleman at there, and with immense publicity, they had a whopping, I think, five to ten people who showed up. So I know the outreach is there. I, I would argue that the participation is not.
Right, and, and we talk about this in our Miami Climate Action Task Force a fair amount, the need to integrate the communication into hiring, into recruitment, into, you know, a- as we want to become this climate-friendly destination in a combined effort between the university and the city, it's really important for us to be messaging that clearly out of the gate and attracting people who are going to be taking us up on those opportunities. So we, we have a cool thing going on here, but we really need to be working, and this, I guess, is a sort of a vacant, you know, vapid statement aimed at Miami University. We should be sha- shouting this from the rooftops, um, that we have these opportunities. So follow-up question, what is the current time, um, of year of operation of your services? Um, so it, I'm under the impression that BCR TA pretty much only runs when campus, when campuses in session, and I was wondering if you could help clear that up for me, like, how summer service? Okay.
The service is much more limited, but that's obviously because we're losing a whole population, so there's not demand. Um, I will say that for the past couple of years, it's been kind of uneven because it's been a little unpredictable, um, but we do provide a limited level of summer service. Um, I can tell you historically that it's been targeted towards, um, international students, folks who don't have cars or dealing with, um, park-and-ride issues that still exist, um, when the students aren't here. Um, during winter term, that's not something we used to do. We, we do do it now, but I believe there's a little break in, in December. Um, but, uh, we resume and will be operating during winter term. It's primarily safe ride, which is a, um, kind of a guaranteed door-to-door ride in the evening, and again, some very, um, limited routes that serve parking lots in like Walmart, Kroger.
Uh, just to also add to that, mostly for the record and the minutes, that is Oxford service. The R routes and the Middletown routes, the forty-two X run year-round, uninterrupted. Um, additionally, uh, there has been, especially with the pandemic and changing patterns in transportation, BOE and more direct service has, has, uh, taken off. Um, and also, just, uh, in case you haven't noticed, and I know other people notice, I'm one of the trustees for RTA. Um, and also just uh in case you haven't noticed, and I know other people notice, I'm one of the trustees for RTA. Um, one, one thing that um uh people probably don't see is there is contracted service beyond Miami. So veterans, uh individuals with disabilities, that's all under the purview of a public transit system.
And of course, you know, with those on-demand services, inevitably you hear complaints from people because it's a difficult thing to administer. Um, so I guess if you could go back to that map of the um BGO service and maybe explain that service, what it offers, who it serves, uh it, I was a little unclear on the actual service area, what the hours are, how far in advance you have to reserve it. If you can just give us a quick rundown on that.
So on the, we, we call it door-to-door service. You, you may hear people, um, there's also the term micro-transit, which some people think of as a smaller zone or area. But basically, we're talking about Uber, Lyft-style service. That's what our BGO service is. Um, we break BGO into three categories. So um, we have our regular general public BGO, which is what you see, the big square, which basically covers the whole county. That's five dollars at six AM to eleven PM, Monday through Friday. Um, the two other categories of BGO, we call one B-Care, which is actually ADA complimentary paratransit service. Um, that's mandated by the ADA. Um, it's a requirement to provide service to folks with disabilities who are unable to ride the regular fixed route bus. We provide service to them within three-quarters of a mile of any of the regular fixed routes, like the R routes or the U routes. Um, we do that during the regular operating time for those routes, so. And that comes at the same cost as um the fixed route, which presently is free. Um, but you have to be certified for that, so um there's an application process for that. We certify people to use that service. Um, and then the last one, kind of the other category, is what we call Safe Ride. It's still kind of a BGO service, but it has um, it's, it's genuine micro-transit. It's a much smaller zone um right within Oxford. Um, it's a guaranteed ride in the evening. It was meant to serve individuals walking alone or um provide services when regular fixed route services are not run. So um, and that service, obviously, that's contracted by Miami to provide for that, but it is open to anybody in the service area um when the service is running, which is. Oh, it's changed a lot in the last couple of years. Um, it's generally evening services. I wanna say it's like ten PM to three AM um on weekdays, um maybe till one AM on Sunday nights um during the school year.
Monday through Saturday until three and then on Sunday is till one.
Correct. And then when um Safe Ride will continue to operate out of term, um and it'll operate from about six PM so much earlier because the fixed routes don't run after all the commuters leave um until about midnight.
So that would be a service, so say you were working the graveyard shift at Miami or you're working third shift. So that would be open to those employees to get back to their homes safely up until midnight though, off of term.
It's a pretty compact zone right now. It's not drawn up here. Um, actually, that's that little blue, the little blue blob right over Oxford is the Safe Ride zone. Um, so it's pretty much, it's just around the, the mile square and it does not go all the way up twenty-seven right now. Again, because it's funded by Miami, um, so we haven't really looked at a whole community perspective. But that is one of the reasons we're asking for input again. Um, the other thing I'll add to that, which isn't really within the scope of what we're talking about today, um, you know, we've had, having some driver issues staffing that service is very popular. Um, all of the BGO services, particularly the general public across the whole county, that's five dollars for that one. Um, we will be replacing the software platform early next year that runs that. So the app um on the customer-facing side that tells you where the bus is and lets you request your trip and everything, as well as the, the scheduling algorithm and the system that our drivers use to go find their pickups and drop-offs. Um, so that is, that is coming fast and that's actually part of a much bigger project across the state with the Council of Governments we belong to, who is only transit agencies. Um, they're very good at leveraging the industry to do what we want and get more. Um, so we're really excited for that and I think the customer experience on that service will be much better and allow us to do some other things. I can tell you, our consultant does not like the countywide service. Um, they would like to shrink some of those zones and make them a little bit more compact um to reduce the cost perhaps in small areas. And then um, you know, uh, cross-county trips are very expensive. Um, and so, you know, probably try to disincentivize some of those unless they're really needed, but provide a stopgap for that. That's one of their ideas um after they get through some of the public comments.
So, so today, if you wanna use the service, how far in advance do you need to reserve that service?
You can call us up to two weeks in advance. You can call us five minutes before, but it is a first-come, first-served service. And I'll tell you right now, if you wanna travel during peak time in the morning commute hours or afternoon commute hours, it's tough to get a ride. Um, this is being honest and transparent. We need more drivers. Um, we need more vehicles, which are also very difficult to get your hands on right now. Um.
And I think it's fair to say BGO is designed to supplement fixed route, not to compete with taxis or Uber. So that's also an educational opportunity for folks to understand the difference between uh the two, the two services.
Is there a prioritization for healthcare, tr- trips for healthcare?
There's not right now.
Okay. Um.
There is prioritization for ADA.
Okay, that's great.
How long has BGO been in existence and has it been evaluated in, in any manner?
Uh, yeah, we, we've had some form of general public dial-a-ride or door-to-door service since probably about two thousand seven. Um, it's been in different formats. Um, we used to have a zone structure. The prices were really high and unaffordable. In twenty twenty, probably about January, we dropped the price to five dollars and everybody disappeared in March. Um, so you know, after, we saw a huge rise in demand in probably summer of twenty twenty-one. Um, and we had extra staff on our hands actually because the university service had not come back. So we had repurposed some of our university operators to drive BGO and it was off the chart. Um, and then Omicron hit us in January and um we lost some people and university service came back and we couldn't hire drivers. We were very shorthanded. Um, and we were denying people like crazy, um, you know, Cory called us out at one meeting because we were actually denying more trips than we were operating. Um, and the metrics looked very bizarre. Um, but it's a, it's a testament to the demand and the need that does exist. I think a lot of people think there's gonna be need for public transit above the county. Um, and there is, and that's why we're doing this.
Dr. Berthold.
So at first I just wanna uh thank you, um, not only for providing public transit in Oxford. I mean, when I first came to Oxford, there was a private bus system that merely served the Miami students. Um, now we have a free public transit service that serves Oxford more widely. And to have free transit is like only the coolest places on the planet have fair enough transit. Um, so it's really great and the, and I really do appreciate that you come and, and ask our input. Because although like we in the community, like sustainability and climate is really high goal and social equity is a high goal, the city doesn't have any skin in the transit game. I mean, we dedicate zero dollars in our budget to it. And so we have to find a way with you to, to put our money where our mouth is because I think transit is really key to achieving a lot of our goals, even though it's, we don't always think of it that way. Um, so I would say that what I love the idea of rethinking the routes, um, because I think the long route routes, long loop routes and going away from your destination before traveling towards it, no one likes that. So I think this idea of corridors is gonna be, make a lot more sense. Um, two questions. One is, is, i- are there, is, does it have to be a necessary trade-off? Because one of your scenarios has no real regional tran- you know, no connections between the cities. And how seriously are you looking at that? Obviously, running buses back and forth between Hamilton and, and, and Oxford is, is probably costly and not a lot of fares, but it's such, it would be a really hard thing to give up. So how much trade-off is there if we keep those routes? Are you able to do everything in, in option, you know? Yeah, so.
Yeah. Uh, the simple answer to that question is we don't know. That's why we're asking for feedback. Um, I can tell you that the, the transit planner who did a lot of these alignments, who's a sub-consultant for our prime consultant, is not from this area. Um, that can be a very good thing, can be a very bad thing. I think it's something that if staff had been working on this, we probably would have never considered.
Okay.
Um, but it is, it looks unusual to somebody who does regular transit planning and is not from our area. So it was obvious to them that, you know, uh, um, why would somebody travel this far? Can they not get all the services and things they need? So that is data we can rely on that we're looking at. So we are looking very carefully. We want the feedback, but we also wanna know why, what is the reason somebody would travel from Oxford to Middletown? You know, what, what is the case there? How many of those riders are there? Same thing with um Middletown and Hamilton. That's actually a pretty busy route for us. Um, but we also wonder how many of those people ride that route because it's all that's available right now and that's the way they get what they need. Could, could they accommodate it if we did something different, more efficient, with better frequency? Um, you know, that's really what we're looking at because these long routes, some of these buses only come every two hours. And um, most transit planners will look at us and laugh when we tell them that. Um, you know, a lot of places we're looking, we need frequency every twenty to thirty minutes. You're, you're lucky in Oxford, we have the density for it up here. Um, some of these buses come during peak time every ten minutes. Um, I tell people all the time, we run like New York DC transit over near Kroger on weekdays. Um, and they don't believe me, it's when we show them videos, but um.
So yeah, I would just, I mean, I think that that ability, I, knowing, for example, that we have a lot of car-less folks in Oxford and they need to get to Hamilton for things like their driver's license or ID. And they probably could do it with BGO, but it's really nice to know there's a connection there. And so I hope that you can hold on to that. Um, the other kind of thoughts I have is that I do think there's a transit service area. I know that the twenty-seven south is served by private shuttles, but there's a, a growing amount of density and services down there. From a transit point of view, it's not the most walkable location. That's kind of on Oxford and the history of how that came about. But we have medical facilities and things like that, that if there's some way of serving that as part of one of your routes, it would be really nice. The College Corner Pike, twenty, a, a, a twenty-seven north and south, I think that those are two areas where I see a really great need to, to enhance service would be really nice and not just after five PM. Um, again, everything's a trade-off, but I think that those are pretty long axes that connects everything.
Yeah, and I just wanna back you up by saying, to me, that's an evident need. I mean, there's no question about it. Would you, that particular route of, uh, College Corner Pike, it, that's a, that's a need that I think stares us in the face.
I, I'd also just like to point out, I don't think it does the Oxford Community Park.
Never has.
Never has.
I know. I'm just saying. That's, I, I understand that. I understand.
This is the planning commission, so I, what we're always battling with is policy. As long as the car is more convenient and people have access to it, that is what they will choose. Um, and as long as we disincentivize transit and make it less convenient, we're always gonna struggle uh to make a case to have it. And that's one of the issues we have with the, the um community park is that it's abundant parking. It's not close to anything else and so it's a challenge to justify ridership. Um, unless somebody steps up to the plate and wants to pay for it, but um, you know, that's another topic. We'll get to that later. But um, you, you, that, it's the same thing with twenty-seven. You know, we're dealing with policy issues where, is it more convenient? Is there incentive? Um, if we provide it, is it really more convenient? Will people use it? So, but it's, it's a good question. Um, we'd love, you know, we always want, we want your opinions as policymakers as well. Um, you know, I think it's important to have that um as part of the survey, so please provide it. The other thing I was gonna say is this is the beginning of a conversation, right? This will continue to go on. I'm sure we will be back in front of you once we have a plan. We will back, be back in front of you as a community, asking you, okay, this is what we came up with and this is how we think we might pay for it. But you know, here's, you know, how we can't do it, or here's our shortfall, or what do you think is right for your community? Do you support, you know, what we're proposing? So I think probably over the next year, eighteen months, there'll be many more conversations.
Also, I was, go ahead.
Can I just add one last follow-on question and then I'll stop completely is that one of the things, yeah, so but. The, the, the routes of, like, the nice thing about the lose, not doing loop routes is that some of your other routes could be extended. So I guess just the thought being if the city were to find a revenue source for a route that's going east-west, is there possible that it's an add-on to the, to the community park? So one out of four buses runs out that way or something. So, so rather than have some route that's going around in circles and not, and serving lightly-served areas, if we can figure out a funding source, you know, what would be ways that you could tack on reasonably to serve things like the community park?
I, I think there's lots of opportunities to kind of look at specific use cases. Um, we've looked very closely at summer and that has really come down to funding um and, and how to fund something like that. But there are, I think there are lots of opportunities like that. I'll tell you, we're looking at that with um evenings with, or days with events and things like that. And how can we keep the system simple and people know how to use it, but then provide extensions or small variations that allow us to deal with, but you know, one-off congestion, um, you know, and things like that.
So I, I was just gonna add some of the context. Um, Mr. Perry and, and many people from RTA have had the opportunity. We are trying to also bring the conversation, especially with the multimodal station going down at Chestnut Field. That's a three-way discussion between BCR TA, Miami, and the city Amtrak platform. So a, a couple, maybe bullet points that aren't sequential or, or interrelated is uh to, to the point about twenty-seven. Uh, when we moved here a decade ago, there was U twenty-seven. It was a route that went into um that area. It was underutilized. Uh, the funding and buy-in from the private uh um landowners evaporated and the choice was made for uh private shuttling. So I think that's also, speaking, I guess, quasi on behalf of the trustees or as a trustee, that's where there was also uh discussion of uh duplication and prioritization. I will say, being a former rider of R three, when I rode it, uh, gosh, let's say twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen to Fairfield, there were no stops uh between Uptown and Meyer and now there's McGonigal and there are other ones along the way. The other bullet point I, I would say, and, and this is a challenge I've given uh in many a conversation with my friends at RTA, is Oxford has an interesting uh um caveat. So I live probably a football field from one of the most dense uh apartment complex areas in Oxford. So when, when transit planners are looking at, okay, well, there's a lot of people who live here, to Ms. Blackmore's point, just because there's volume or we're, you know, we're, we're trying to get certain demographics of folks accustomed to this. So there's an incentiviza- incentivization, if that's a word. Um, but also we have lifestyles or, or things. So a, a student, every ten minutes on the U three, that's great. They hop on, they hop off. If you have a faculty member who comes and goes and, you know, for example, my wife does research and one of her classes meets at the middle school, she needs a car to come to campus. She cannot use public transit. And the frequency of folks who would go to the middle school is, it's cost prohibitive. So one of the things we get a monthly metric on at the RTA meetings is uh operator cost and administrative cost per hour. Um, so that is something we have to be cognizant of because these gentlemen get to report that to our friends in DC. Um, but I did, this is a very intentional conversation. Mr. Perry and, and many of the folks at RTA and the university, there's a ton of conversations going on in the background. So the historical context is one, but I think it's exciting because with the multimodal station, there is an opportunity and receptiveness um from the uh staff at BCR TA to say, okay, hey, instead of everything coming in and out of Farmer, Armstrong, so on and so forth, here's where it's gonna be. What can we do? So I think we have a ton of opportunity and we just need to get folks to answer the surveys, because otherwise.
Yes, I would say this is the base. This is the starting point. This is the data we're gonna use to make all the cases, you know, going forward, um, at least for the next couple of years. So this, you know, whatever ends up in this plan is probably gonna be our primary focus and that's what we're gonna be moving towards um to, to make sure we're kind of achieving our goals. So please, um, uh, we want your feedback. We want your constituents' feedback. We want organizations' feedback. If there's anybody who can connect us with you think we're missing, please let us know. I'm happy to, to step out and do that. Um, we'll take our roadshow anywhere. We'll mail paper surveys. Um, and if you've got other ideas, we're open to them.
If you wanna come to an RTA meeting, I go down every Wednesday.
It's next, next week. Who wants to go?
It's just a very particular, but it, it strikes me because of my recent experience with hospitals that I wonder, and ask the question, is to what extent has McCallahide been one of the, one of the actors and figures in your planning? Or is it, well, it's nice to have it there, but there's no urgency? I'm just curious if you could come in on that.
Um, we always look at that. One of the things the transit planners always pull up, and you don't see it in these maps, but when they're doing their planning, they always lay over schools, hospitals, large job centers, universities. Um, they're looking for those because they are trip drivers. Um, I can tell you in the historical context, we don't see a lot of trip generation from McCallahide in town. There's a little bit. Um, we've tried very hard to accommodate it for a number of years um to make sure we're close to it. Um, but we tend to see um, uh, you know, emergency, emergency trips are generally not handled by calling and asking for a ride or waiting for the bus. Um, and you know, a lot of people have time to arrange a pickup. We do have situations, particularly in some of our other locales, where people have no other options um and they need to get a bus ride. um, and they need to get a bus ride home from the hospital.
Right.
Um, in our experience, I think those are pretty desperate situations and we try to take good care of those people. Um, haven't had too much of it here, but it, it is something that factors into the plan for sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just to re-say it one more time, I think that really talking, Miami, we know, has a hard time filling their low-wage positions and their service positions. And it would be strategic for them to look ahead and think about how they're going to do that. And that, that, that's a conversation that could really be supported by transit. And so I thinking of, thinking about how to integrate, um, that vision of who they're going to hire and how they're going to run their operations with a transit plan, I think would be strategic. So I obviously will try to say that within a Miami university context, but that would be a good thing to look at.
Be happy. We don't, um, we've had some connections with the H R department, but i- if you know somebody, please, please share the information or, um, send us emails or addresses. We'll connect with people too. Um, we don't mind cold calling and reaching out if you can give us contact information. Um, we're happy to do that. Like I said, we want feedback from everybody. Don't, doesn't necessarily mean you have to be a bus rider. Um, it might be an H R department or somebody who's helping constituents to get rides to a certain location or something.
I was wondering if I could ask a slightly different question while you're here. Um, can you give any insight into future plans for electrification?
Yeah. Um, battery technology for transit is just still not very good. Um, you know, um, it, it, there are some use cases where it works. Um, I actually think Oxford and some of the routes here, we started looking at that. We have an alternative fuel study out with another consultant right now. That's actually a partnership with Cincinnati Metro and Transit Authority of Northern Kentucky. Um, we're doing that together, so we'll get a consolidated report for the whole region, which should hopefully help us seek grants together and do a couple of other things. Um, we already have some money lined up for alternative fuel vehicles beginning in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven. Our heavy-duty vehicle fleet is not eligible for replacement until that timeframe. Um, those vehicles were purchased starting in twenty fifteen. You've got to get at least twelve years out of a heavy-duty bus like those before the feds will give you money to replace them. Um, so we will be looking at something. I think battery electric may be a possibility up here. We do try to look at the whole picture. You know, we're working at, a lot of people just look at tailpipe emissions. We want to look at generation. We also consider some of the rare earth minerals and the mining that happens to go into those batteries. Um, batteries on a bus, you can't use them after. You've got about eighty percent capacity, so you've got to do something else with it. Is there somebody to recycle it? And some of those things don't exist right now. So there's a lot of variables involved. I think we will get into something, um, we're looking very closely at hydrogen too. Um, it's still kind of wildly expensive. It's about three times the cost of a diesel bus to get a hydrogen bus, but there are lots of people running them. Um, and that has a lot better range and, and some, avoids a lot of issues. So we're looking at that too.
Uh, just to specify, is that hydrogen or hydrogen fuel cell?
Hydrogen fuel cell, yes. Yeah. So essentially electric bus, um, it's a much smaller battery package, obviously, because we can, um, provide current with the hydrogen fuel cell bus. Um, you're not the first person to call me out on my terminology.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay. It's just I know both are used and one's way more environmentally effective.
Yeah. So, um, our problem is operating environments, um, you know, uh, temperature, um, and, and, um, topography play a lot into electric. So that's something we don't currently think about today that we have to look at. Um, because routes are short in Oxford and they go back to a main hub where they can be charged in between, um, you know, trips, um, that makes Oxford a good location to look at battery electric, but like the R three that goes to Hamilton. Uh, you know, we've got too much topography. We've got too much swing and weather to make a trip that far. Um, it would be a real challenge for us, so we have to look at hydrogen. The other thing I'll say is we try to use small buses where we can, where we don't have capacity. Um, uh, for our door-to-door B go and paratransit service, battery's a non-starter right now. Um, we consistently run more than two hundred miles a day on a vehicle. You can get a hundred and twenty out of a battery electric, um, small bus on a good day in California where the weather's nice and, um, you're not losing energy to, um, weather or running your heat or air conditioning. So there's some challenges. We will be looking at probably some low emission things like, um, propane, um, maybe C and G, um, something to bridge the gap until technology catches up. But we're, we're on it. We're talking with the Climate Action Task Force at the university. We're happy to work with the city on some of those goals. Um, any of those things. It's a good question.
Great. And I think a lot of that will come sooner than we think, especially around the electrification.
Yeah, it's changing very, very, very rapidly. Um, so that's another thing, you know, you, we, we do work to study right now, but we're not ready to buy a bus for two or three years and might be completely different.
Understand.
All right.
Any questions for our, our lone non-P C Oxford member?
I was actually going to ask if, if you had any questions.
That's his time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Did, did the public get a, is it the public open for questions?
Well, so there's public comment at our meetings.
Okay. Did we offer that up? I missed it.
It's up to you. If you want to ask for any input from the audience, it's up to you.
So this was, this was really more of a presentation for us as opposed to a Q and A because I think the intent really was for them to share about the survey and drive traffic to the survey. So I think it's more apropos.
Survey, survey, survey. If you have questions about the survey, you can visit our website, fill out information or go to B C R T A Transit Plan. Um, there's contact information there. Our project manager's email address is right there. Um, we'd be happy to take that, but, um, we want the feedback. Complete the survey, put some pins on the map, you know? Um, we're very, very interested in all that information. So the more, the better.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Bring some of my worlds together conveniently.
Thanks so much for having us. We appreciate your time and, um, lots of interesting questions. We love to answer questions.
Thanks for your thoughtfulness.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, we are at the number seven on the agenda in Roman numerals. Uh, so I will gladly accept a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
All right, Mr. Dana, Ms. Rosenberg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.